If we're all ready to go, Tammy? I know that, but uh... Oh, yes, she is. I just...
I know exactly where she is.
Well, she was here.
I saw, I saw.
Oh, yeah, she was right here.
There she is.
There she is. Oh, she went to get a sweater.
I'm very smoot, so I know she's here.
She went to get a sweater. She was cold, that's what it was. There we go. You all ready? Alrighty, um, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the City Council of Port Ritchie, Florida, held here in Council Chambers, the City Hall, at 7:30 PM on Tuesday, September 8th, 2015. If you would all stand for the invocation by the Reverend Sandy Spaldy, Chapel Divine, uh, Chapel of Divine Spirit, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
God, Creator of all there is and ever shall be, we thank you for our gathering this evening. We thank you for everyone that works in the city and everyone who serves the city. We ask that you grant us the wisdom to make the proper decisions for the highest good of our city. We ask you to bless our little city. For this, we are thankful. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sandy. Songtime is not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Acting Mayor Bel Columbus.
Here.
Councilman Steve O'Neill.
Here.
Councilwoman Nancy Britton.
Here.
Councilman Terrence Rowe.
Here.
Councilwoman Nancy, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Phyllis Gray. City Attorney Joseph Public.
Here.
And City Manager Tom O'Neill.
Here.
Okay, very good. Uh, we have a couple of minutes up for approval. We have the, um, approval of the City Council Workshop Meeting of August 5th to August 25th, 2015, and a regular City Council Meeting minutes of Au- August 25th, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Announcements, Mr. O'Neill.
Uh, none at this time.
Mr. Public?
I have nothing.
Okay, we go out to the general public. Announcements from the general public. I have a few folks signed up. I got, uh, Thomas Brown. Thomas Brown, please.
Thomas Brown, 7436 Candlelight Court. First of all, I would appreciate an answer to the question that I presented in writing to all of you. Did Lake Cox exist prior to 1980? A simple yes or no is all I need. Secondly, I was informed by the City Manager that it is important to understand that your proposed fence cannot be placed on the public right-of-way of Candlelight Court. In county records, City of Port Ritchie records, and on a resident survey, I find no reference to a public right-of-way of Candlelight Court. A public right-of-way, an easement, and a perpetual public easement all have different legal status. Most importantly is that time limits can not be placed on a perpetual public easement. For instance, public roads leading to and on school properties have an easement or right-of-way that allows the public to travel on them except for certain defined hours in the morning and certain hours in the afternoon. This is legally permissible on a right-of-way, but cannot be required or enforced on a perpetual public easement because of the word perpetual. Therefore, it is important to me and those that wish to comply with city ordinances that the City Manager issue a correction to his statement pertaining to the public right-of-way of Candlelight Court. Ultimately, the city could allow the erection of a fence on a perpetual public easement in violation of city ordinance if the perpetual public easement is wrongfully identified as a right-of-way. I do not believe that any member of the city government should refer to a piece of land as a right-of-way when in fact it is not a right-of-way. Imagine the consequences if I were to call the police and tell them there is a king cobra snake in my yard when in fact it was not a king cobra. Calling something that it is not is misinformation and it should be corrected. I notified the City Manager of his mistake on August 28th, and after going to City Hall this morning, I have received, as usual, no response. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh, Larry Daley? Uh, to Tammy. Name and address, please, for the record, when Tammy gets back to sitting down.
My name is Larry Daley. I live at 8150 Brent Street, Port Ritchie. To start with, um, I've got a little bit of a summary I want to read to you. In 1925, V.H. McLean and his wife beque- bequeathed for public use all common areas and submerged lands for use in the Davis subdivision by all owners. All lots on Davis to this day, or all, all of the, the lots to this day, have a 1/29th interest in this land. Okay? For those of you who are not familiar with what I'm referring to, I'm referring to the boat ramp that was built on this piece of property. In February 2010, Mr. James Priest applied to the Army Corps of Engineers and the DEP without the consent of all of these 29 owners for a permit to add a boat ramp to an existing family dock. Please note that there is no family dock on the piece of property that we're describing here. Okay? There is a dock on Mr. Priest's property, which is adjoining this public parcel. After obtaining the five-year permits, Mr. Priest applied to the City of Port Ritchie for a build, uh, excuse me, to the City of Port Ritchie Building Department in February of 2011. He used a joint parcel ID on the initial application, but listed himself as the owner and was given a one-year permit by the city. And on, in February 11th, 2011, uh, his turn, his city permit expired. Nothing happened until he reapplies on February 3rd of 2015, just before his five-year permit is to expire. On the city permit, he now changes the parcel ID from the joint parcel to his personal adjoining parcel ID, which the building official probably didn't notice. He again lists himself as the owner and the contractor. He's granted a city permit for a residential boat ramp, excluding the other 28 owners of this property. I'm not sure how he can do that, but somebody let him do it. The cost of the job was listed with the City of Port Ritchie Building Department as $2,495 to put in a boat ramp. And while this contract is from a marine, the, the, the contract from the marine contractor is listed at $10,000, thus diminishing the city from collecting the cor- the correct permit fees. The group that Mr. Priest is at...
Mr. Daley, there is a lot to digest here.
Yes.
And we will.
Okay.
So will the City Attorney and the City Manager. Thank you.
I'm not through.
I, sir, you get three minutes in public comment. That's in, it's in the rules. It is in our city code.
Can we elect to have him continue?
I will second that if Miss Britton makes that motion.
We've never done it before, and it sets a very bad precedent.
It has been.
But you can make a motion. You can make a motion. You can make a second.
Yeah, allow him to continue.
Okay.
Sandy was getting...
Got a second? Well, that's giving him another three minutes. Is another three minutes enough?
Mr. Columbus, I'll try and be brief.
Okay, sir.
With this, and I appreciate your patience in, in this, because this is a very complicated matter.
I understand.
Okay, I'm sure you're familiar with it as it is. The, um, I'm not going to read the, the information I have about, uh, former mayor, God rest her soul. Mr. Or, um, let me try to skip through this just a little bit. In, um, in the permit application for building this ramp, Mr. Priest lists himself as the owner slash contractor. Okay? He's not the owner and he's not a contractor. However, the city went ahead and issued him a permit. Now, this was done during the administration when the, uh, building official, prior to, to John here, when we had a building official that was hired from a private provider. Okay? Now, Miss Mary Jo, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing this right, Hanos?
Haynos.
Haynos, thank you. On her, on advice of her attorney, went to the City Manager to complain and was told by Mr. O'Neill that Jim Priest told me you would be the one that caused trouble. Don't really know that. I wasn't there, but this is information I have. Mr. O'Neill attempted to stop the Port Authority Board from discussing this because of possible future litigation. The, uh, the building official, the City Manager, and the mayor may have been, I'm not quite sure what the word is here, um, complicit in allowing this permit to be issued. It's, uh, been done for somebody that, uh, everybody knows around here. I'm requesting that the City Council investigate this and, um, turn their report in for public review. A couple of things that came to my mind in reading through this information. The cost of the project is magically under the $2,500 threshold, which requires a notice of commencement. Now, for those of you who are not in the construction industry, a notice of commencement is required on anything over $2,500 in the way of, any construction in the way, over $2,500. It's re- it's a document that's required to be signed by the owner and it's required to be notarized. Falsification of a notice of commencement is a state, is a violation of state law and a felony. Okay? Anybody who participates and conspires with someone to allow this to happen is also guilty of a felony. The DEP permits that were issued on this job were issued to Mr. Priest's property. But at the end of the day, he changes that information and puts the, or it's, it's issued to the Riverbank. It's, it's classified on the prop- on a property appraiser's website as the parcel ID ending in Riverbank. When Mr. Priest filed for the permit, he filed for the permit on his own property and not on this property. However, the dot, the, the ramp that was built was not built on his property. It was built on an adjacent property that he did not own. Now, there is information in here, in this, that you can digest that shows that he did make an effort to the DEP for his own property and for the Riverbank at various times. But at the end of the day, he falsified the documents that were given to the, to the, uh, City of Port Ritchie Building Department. And in addition, the, the permit that he applied to with the DEP stated that there was an existing family dock on his property. There, there is a family dock on his property, but not on the property that is owned by these 29 people. This is the permit application. It shows that he, that the cost of the job was listed at $2,495. The contract with the subcontractor shows $10,000. Mr. Priest legally was not allowed to submit for a permit in excess of $2,500 without the proper signatures on a notice of commencement. Now, I'm going to kind of skip through all this other stuff and kind of read what I think is, is important.
Mr. Daley, please. Please keep it short.
I'm skipping through.
I understand. I'm saying this is...
Okay? Now...
Again, this is public comment. It's not a hearing. It's public comment. But go ahead.
Okay. State statute says that any person who knowingly or intentionally makes or furnishes to another person false information about the payment status of subcontractors, contractors, suppliers in connection with the improvements of real property in the state is guilty of a felony in the third degree punishable as provided by Florida Statute 775.082 or 775.083. A state attorney or a statewide prosecutor upon the filing of an indictment...
Okay, Mr. Daley, I, I'm going to interrupt you here and say that, um, our City Attorney has a copy of this.
Okay.
And, and I, I looked for him to look it over and I looked for the City Manager to look it over, and he's well aware of the state statutes. And I think you quote them in here on several occasions, so...
I do.
So, I, I appreciate it.
All right, uh, may I ask what, what y'all will do about this?
I'm going to ask them to look at it and report back to us.
Okay, will that be a public comment back to us?
Um, yeah, it would be a public, yeah. Back to us, I mean by, at council, at council meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Jody Cunningham, please.
Um, my name is Jody Cunningham. I was diagnosed with active progressive multiple sclerosis, which means lesions and scatters in your brain, which affects every part of your body, your swallowing, your mind, your vision. I called the police to Dr. Massid's house because I was afraid of intruders. I had been suffering from severe acute attacks from the multiple sclerosis and having bad reactions to the new medication in which I was taking. Upon the police arrival, I immediately felt that we were under attack for illegal substances. I repeatedly told the police I have a mess and started a new m- medication, which I was having a hard time with, and that Dale and I had a few drinks to help try to calm this monster down. Did not work. After trying to explain to the officers multiple times my situation, their only concerns were for any illegal activities that were going on in that house. I heard Dr. Massid say to Henley, "Jesus Christ, I called you out for an intruder and you're going to turn, try to turn this into this." I feel crucified, Dr. Massid, for trying to help me cope with this disease. It's appalling. I am, in closing, I feel that a City Manager to get copies of what I believe to be an unbiased, um, police report and pass them out to comps, council members before a meeting is not a man of character. I believe that he was, that the information was incorrect or misunderstood. If you guys have any knowledge of what multiple sclerosis does to somebody, you should do that knowledge and then write a report and then pass it out to people so they would have a better understanding of what is going on. I do believe what was written about Dr. Massid was because of a disease that I have been afflicted upon and because of my bad reaction to medications. I did not do cocaine. I am in clinical trials. I get blood tested on a weekly basis. There were no illegal drugs on those premises, nor have I seen them at Dr. Massid's. I do believe that it was misunderstood. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham.
But I do think that the officers of the police department do an excellent job, and there are a lot of very good people in the police department. I just believe that this incident was definitely taken the wrong, out of context.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment before we bring it back up to council? All right, well, let's, um... I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening. Kristen Tonkin, 10220 Hilltop Drive. I just, uh, I do research to find grants and things like that, and I saw an opportunity that might suit our city. And it's called the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity Waterfronts Florida Program. It offers help to coastal, local governments to revitalize their working waterfronts. To basically, they provide, uh, resources and technical assistance for planning to revitalize the waterfront areas. And if you'll just take a note of this number. Frank Fetchik, F.E.T.C.H.I.C.K. Area Code 8507178506. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't see other hands, so I will bring it up to council for council comment. Ladies, gentlemen, Mr. Rowe, Ms. Britton? Somebody want to jump in and start it off?
Yeah, I do. Uh, just a couple of things.
Let's, Phyllis wants to go.
No, go right ahead, sir.
Okay.
Um, just hearing with the, uh, going back on the, uh, activity related to the demolitions, uh, of the slum and blighted properties. Again, I want to thank the staff for working on things like this. Going back several years, I think all of us are aware of the history and areas that have been resolved. And, um, that's credit to the staff. The active code enforcement, uh, knock and talk effort, uh, very good. Obviously, something, uh, tonight we're going to cover. I know we don't have anybody here from IT, but, shoo, man, I don't know about you guys, but I'm getting a load of junk mail. So, I don't know if something's changed. I don't remember having all that. You guys having the same thing? Um, I thought I got a lot at home, but woo. So, anyway, I don't know if anybody can bring it forward to IT and there's something else we need to do.
I'm not get- I'm not getting any. So, it must be me that's doing it, so...
Is it?
Yeah.
I mean, we're getting everything. Uh, the junk is really...
No, I mean, it's, uh, is, uh, excuse me for interrupting for just a second, but I mean, is it, is it government-related stuff? Or is it just, uh...
Uh, no. There's a lot of other stuff.
Okay, crazy other stuff.
Lots of other junk. Yeah. Um, we mentioned this before. Maybe we set something up already, and I didn't jot it down, but the, uh, stormwater analysis, do we have? I know there's a lot to pull together to move that forward, but did we have some suggestion already when that would be an agenda item? I know we have to look to the outside. We have to have, uh, I forget their name now. The, uh, group we had before.
The engineering group? Burton and Associates.
Burton and Associates, yeah. Whether they've got a, I don't know, if we've got the wheel turning on that, I guess, is, is my point. Uh, to get that, uh, on an agenda and start those discussions. Uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Britton?
Well, you know, um, I definitely want us to look into, um, this whole, uh, dock issue. Hopefully that, uh, Joe can come back and give us some more information on that. And maybe John could be of assistance with some of that also. And, uh, as far as the grant is concerned, that'd be interesting to look into. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Um, that might be something that our grant, uh, gentleman can, uh, follow through for us. No?
Thank you for having the opportunity to talk. The, the, these are things that we can handle on our own. This isn't really like a grant opportunity. This is a, an economic opportunity.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't need to get a grant writer. And from now on, really, when we, when we find a grant that suits us, it's, the grants are, they're so fill-in-the-blank. It's, the way that the departments are doing it now, it's like basically fill in the blank. It's so easy. We don't need that. Jocelyn is an educated woman. She can totally fill in the blanks for us.
Right, Jocelyn?
We don't need this man any extra money.
Right. No, she absolutely knows how to do them. But we have another guy doing those other specific grants that, um...
That Fred Fox Enterprises, right.
Yep.
Mr. Rowe?
Well, in, in lieu of what we've been given here, I personally would like a full report on the city's position by the next meeting. Because from what he's speaking about is felony. I have no want to be a part of that. If there are mistakes made, let's admit them and move on, get it fixed, whatever it's going to take, but this is something that looks very substantial. They have evidence with it. I'd like to know where the city stands on this. Did we do the right thing? Did we do the wrong thing? We'll have to see. I asked Mr. Cosmo to, uh, work with City Manager, please get us a report by the next meeting so we know where we stand on this.
Next regular meeting, of course.
Pardon?
We have a budget meeting coming up, next regular meeting.
A regular, regular meeting. And the only other thing I wanted to talk about was the release of that police report at City Hall. I'm bothered by that. I don't think it was right. I talked to Brian Corley today, Supervisor of Elections. He didn't think it was right either. I wouldn't like to see anything like that happen at City Hall again. I believe that, in this building, we should remain neutral in elections, and I think that that can definitely affect in some way, shape, or form, the election. And if it's close, Mr. Corley said, a case could be made that it affected the election. So, it compromises our neutrality in elections from these positions, from this building. And I'm very sorry that that happened.
Yeah, that, that being said, I just have one point. I, you know, I personally would like to know how it, it did, it did get out because I agree with Mr. Rowe. And, um, I wonder if the newspaper came to the city and asked for information or, or what, and, uh, so if the newspaper could let us know, that'd be great.
Ms. Gray?
I have something, a couple of things, but it has nothing really to do with any of the issues, but I think they're important things to, to hear.
General comment.
Thank you. Couple of weeks ago, I sat with the, uh, the chief and we were talking about security and the use of credit cards and debit cards and all of that, especially when you go to an outside area at a gas station, wah-wah, or whatever. And the cr- the chief told me something which I'd like to pass on to everybody, that, um, when you are about to insert your card, if you would just jiggle the, the, the housing for the credit card, and if it moves, it's been tampered with. That's something I never knew. And so, the next time I went to the gas station and I was all ready to put my card in, I said, mm. And I, you know, jiggled, but it was, you know, it was solid. Okay, so that's really, really good advice for all the people to know.
Phyllis, can you talk into your microphone more?
I maybe will, but this is a little crazy microphone. This is good. This is good. Okay, so what happened now today on the heels of all of this? Actually, we have to go back to last night. I'm on the computer and there is, um, an email from Bank of America. And I don't like to respond to any of that because I don't know whether it's really official or if somebody is trying to, you know, hack into the account. And so, one of the questions was, uh, one of the statements was, "We have your telephone number on file. Would you like us to continue to use it?" So, I only gave you a yes or a no, and I said, yes. And then the next question was, "If so, please put in your phone number." Well, of course, I know better, so I, you know, I clicked off and that was the end of that. Okay. Today, I'm at the store and one of the employees answered the phone and it, it was Bank of America. Today, I'm at the store, and one of the employees answered the phone, and it was Bank of America Fraud Prevention calling me. So, I picked up the phone to answer, and there was nobody on the other end. All right, I thought that was kind of funny, since what happened last night. Then, we go to get gas tonight on our way home, and I have my business credit card, and Alistair puts it in, and it's rejected, declined. I said, okay, so I go inside, and the young lady said, "Card is declined." So, I said, okay, so we paid cash, that was that. So, she said, "Call the number on the back of your card." So, I call the number, and I get Bank of America, and it's a good thing I did, because somebody in Bradenton used my account for thirteen hundred dollars at Home Depot. Now, the young man isn't from Florida, he has no idea where Bradenton is in relation to Port Ritchie, so, you know, I tell him we're like three and a half hours away. And he said, "Mrs. Gray, they not only used it once for thirteen hundred dollars, they used it twice at the same Home Depot." And so, needless to say, the card got declined. So, I asked him, and this is another piece of advice for everybody, I asked him, "What do you do when you get calls from Bank of America, or you see something on the computer?" He said, "Absolutely do not reply to anything on the computer, and if you get a telephone call, say to the person, 'Thank you very much, but I will call the number on the back of my card, and I will ask them.'" And that's the only time you should ever give out information, is when you have called the number on the back of the card. And whoever this person is, for twenty-six hundred dollars at Home Depot in Bradenton, they also used my card at a gas station in Tampa today. And I said, "No, this is the first time we're getting gas today." So, just, you know, it's information that, just to keep you on your toes, I think it's good, and I appreciate what, what the chief had told me about the credit cards. So, there you go.
Good thing they didn't go to Mom's Venus or something like that, that would have been just terrible.
Once that number goes public, and honest to goodness, you know, they'll have to issue you...
Only the back of the card, that's all.
They'll issue you a new card, and clean it up, but, you know, once it gets out there, yeah.
Other than that, everything is just fine.
Good information.
That was good, though.
All right.
I have to jiggle from now on.
Yeah, you gotta jiggle.
You learn to jiggle, well, you know how to jiggle.
Okay, down to the agenda, the first item is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a first, we have a second. Does anybody have any questions, or changes, or anything? All in favor? Okay. As we move into regular council business, we have an emergency agenda item before us that came before us today, so I will defer to the city manager to explain to us what we're talking about.
Yes, I am going to ask that you consider an emergency item tonight. One is an amendment to the cooperation agreement that you recently approved with the Community Development Block Grant Program, and also a resolution authorizing and approving the mayor slash acting mayor to execute that amendment. Drawing your attention to the language that changed, it is on the second page, and it is "Language prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies within the jurisdiction against any individual engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstration," and goes on to speak in detail about that. The amendment that you recently approved was submitted to HUD by County Community Development, and that language in the older agreement was rejected, and they ask us today to consider this as an emergency item, because it has to be turned back into HUD by Friday. Indeed, the county commission today considered this as an emergency item and approved this language change. So, what we would need is a motion and a second to consider this as an emergency, emergency item tonight. And then, secondly, if you proceed with that, which I would recommend, we would need to consider both the resolution and the amendment for your approval.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we have an amendment, and we have a resolution, we would do the resolution first, I would suspect, wouldn't we?
Yeah, that would work.
Right, so looking for a motion on the resolution.
Motion to approve.
We would need to...
You gotta read it first?
You would need to make a motion to consider this as an emergency item.
Well, yeah, the first thing it needs to be is placed on the agenda, so you would need a vote and a second to place it on the agenda as an emergency item.
Very good.
Okay. Motion to place the emergency resolution on the agenda for September 8, 2015, second.
Second, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Just to clarify, you do mean both the amendment and the resolution?
Right, so we do the resolution first, and Mr. Public.
Resolution by the City of Port Ritchie, Florida authorizing and approving the mayor to execute amendment number one to the cooperation agreement between the City of Port Ritchie and Pasco County, Florida, to participate in the Urban County Community Development Block, Block Grant Home Investment Partnerships and the Emergency Solution Grant Programs.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Okay, so we got, who firsted and who seconded? Terry first, and Phyllis Gray second. Okay, very good. Any comments on council on this? No? Any council, any comments from the public? Okay, well, we got a motion, we got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And against? Nope, unanimous? All right, secondly comes the amendment itself. Mr. Public?
Okay, amendment number one to the cooperation agreement with the City of Port Ritchie Community Development Block Grant Program, CFDA 14.218, Home Investment Partnership Program, CFDA 14.239.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to approve. And we have a second?
Amendment number one.
Amendment number one. And Phyllis, did you second?
Second.
We got a second over there. So, we have a first and a second, do we have any comments, public comment? Again, back up to the dais, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes? All right. Now, down to amendment, council business, item number two, Discussion of Code Enforcement and Residential Parking Restrictions. Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, I put this on for your discussion, this is discussion only tonight, to see if there are any other code enforcement issues that you want to bring up, and also whether or not that you would like to proceed with additional residential parking restrictions. Two cities of Pasco are doing that, and are underway with considering additional restrictions, and their restrictions amount to no parking of vehicles, cars, trailers, trucks, including boat trailers, in the front or side yards of properties that are not paved. And as you have seen, I'm sure the grass and other vegetation will quickly die if covered up. And we've received numerous complaints on this, and so I've listed it for your discussion. And if you want to pursue this, I would suggest that you tell me to get you additional restriction language from other jurisdictions for your consideration, and we will place it on a future agenda if you want to proceed.
All righty. Well, I'll go out for discussion at this point on council.
I definitely am a hundred percent, a hundred and fifty percent behind this. We don't have a lot of issue at this point in most of the areas of Port Ritchie, but we do have some, some, in some areas of the city, and before, you know, if you, if you drive through other sections of, of the Pasco County area, and you see this everywhere, you know, where you have a car in the driveway, and then two more up in the grass, it's just not a pretty sight. And I think that we need to take, go in the direction to continue the code enforcement efforts that we've made here, and that we continue to make. I've just called Mr. O'Neil with a variety of issues, and I want us to, I want to see us go forward. You know, Mr. Bedova is out here in the community, in the audience, and we had a discussion that, you know, if we keep our property levels high, or keep our code enforcement, our, our property values will go up, it'll be a desirable place to live, and taxes then will increase, and so on and so forth. So, it's a snowball effect, and everybody in the city of Port Ritchie should want that. So, I'm a hundred and fifty percent behind this.
Okay. I'd be behind as well, but I would also point out, you know, where Newport Ritchie started is not where they're at now. That's still working its way through, and in actually going through it and keeping it simple. And obviously, as Nancy said, there's a lot to do, but I think, I would like to see other models as well, you know, not only Newport Ritchie and what recently has occurred there in their transition, but what about some other spots? You know, I know we're a small location, but still, you know, what's, what's happening in some of the others. And again, just keeping it simple, I think, you know, when we've talked about fences in the past, and we've talked about other things, things become pretty complex, but, you know, this is a broad issue. She's here tonight as well, I don't know if she wants to speak, but I think that, you know, it's a hot topic, and, you know, I'm not surprised that we've had phone calls, all of us, in relation to, in relation to this, so.
Anybody else?
Mr. Bedova? Thank you. I, because of my business, have done a lot of work with the City of Temple Terrace, and their code compliance, they switched to code enforcement, to code compliance, and I think that's what we use now, which is very good, softer. I called Joe Gross, his name is, he's no longer with Temple Terrace, he's over at Hillsborough County, but because we've known each other for so many years, he was very, very kind, and told me all about the program that Temple Terrace utilized. And it was along the lines of the, the knock and talk, or whatever we're calling that. And it was to keep property clean, values, as Nancy says, go up, of course. And Temple Terrace is somewhat like us, they're very small, lovely homes, good areas, and what Joe did, he, they decided, council decided, and gave him permission, to sweep the area, what Joe calls sweep the area. And he said, "This keeps it where you are not selecting what homes are in possible violation." So, everybody on that block would, would be covered. And he said that they, they started by sending a letter to everyone, explaining that we're going through this whole area, and we need your cooperation, and there are possible violations. And they would list whatever the violations were on the particular houses. And every house got a letter. If there were no violations at somebody's house, they got a letter saying that the code compliance was sweeping the area, so that they knew that their neighbors were all, you know, going to be, their homes going to be looked at. About a month later, after the letter went out, and hopefully, people did whatever they're, you know, should be doing, about a month later, code compliance went to the houses as a follow-up with the code compliance officer and a policeman. Now, they have the luxury down at Temple Terrace where they can borrow segways from the city of Tampa, and so, the police that accompanied the code compliance officer went in a segue. He said, "Of course, you don't have that in Port Ritchie." He said, "But maybe your officer who accompanies Sherri would be not in, you know, a full dress uniform, maybe somewhat relaxed, possibly on a bicycle, possibly with the same officer going out that the people know as their community officer." And he said, "It makes it look less intense." And then, that was that one month later, when, when she would go out. And then, when they knocked on the door, Sherri would ask, and indeed, it was Sherri, because Joe knows Sherri from a long time ago. And she's not here, so I can't send her regards, his regards to her, but I will. Then she would ask, "Did you get the letter that we mailed?" And even after speaking with the people, if they had difficulty, because sometimes they can't afford to do everything, would put them in touch with nonprofits who would help out on how to get the means to fix their property. And Joe said that when everybody got the same letter, they knew nobody was being singled out. And he said, "The whole process was proactive and not reactive." Then, I thought the best part of the whole thing, I loved all this, you know, in the beginning, how it was done with the letters and the knocking on the doors, then, after the violations were cleared, they sent out this wonderful postcard. And it says, "Greetings, Temple Terrace Code Enforcement Officer, blah, 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 and we thank you," and, and it was just a wonderful touch, I thought, in connecting the city with the people. So, I would like, when we sweep an area, that we use some of the things, or possibly all of the things that Joe has suggested. These were my notes that I took as we were talking, and then I put them and typed them out as best I could, you know, so it made it a little bit more legible. But of course, and then the new officer came from Temple Terrace, of course, and he said, whatever help, you know, they could give us. But all this, it just shows you what cities, when you reach out to them to ask for help, they, they are just right there for you. I mean, I spoke with Joe probably at 2:30 this afternoon, I told him we had a council meeting tonight, he said, "Well, I'll try to, I'll call Temple Terrace and see if I can get somebody." Before we left at about a quarter or four, code compliance came in and gave me all this information.
Great.
So, I think it's something that we need to address, because there are, you know, if you go down Bay Boulevard, I hate to single out, but it's, it's a hodgepodge, it looks pretty awful, and there's other areas in the city that look equally as bad. So, we need to get one area at a time, sweep that area, as Joe has recommended, send the letters out, have violations listed for each house, give them time to correct, go back one month later, visit, see if we can help in any way, and I, I just think it is going to help the city, I really do, so.
Lovely neighbor.
Yeah.
Could I get copies of those? Those are very good suggestions, and we can incorporate those.
Yeah, I will give you everything.
Okay, and as do I. When it comes to the, the basic thrust of what we're talking about right here, to me, this is one of those things that sounds good in, you know, the abstract form, but in the practicality, especially with our city, and the multiple types of homes we have, and the multiple ages of the homes we have, that requiring paving for all vehicles that might park on that piece of property would be not only an undue influence on those who are on the older, smaller houses, but also would make those houses right now that are sitting vacant, that people are looking to rent out, harder to rent out, because it's a different world. I mean, my house was built around 1960, there's a lot of them like that, and they were not built with much paving. And nowadays, you go to a home, and you've got, you got mom, you got dad, you got a couple of kids who are still living at home, everybody's got a car. To require these small houses to have four-car driveways, and that's not counting for potential visitors they may have, or family that may come to visit, that I just see, I just don't see it as practical. I mean, obviously, in San Pablo, and Harbor Point, and, and those areas, you know, you have your own rules that you can, you can enforce within your areas, but when you get out of that, and you get to the east side, and you get down to certain parts of the south side, they're just, there's a lot of rental homes there already, and, you know, again, it's hard for them, you know, it's, they've got, those homes were built, you know, most of us have been in Florida for a long, long, long time. It's, they've got, those homes were built, you know, most of us have been in Florida for a long, long, long time. You know, back in the day when a house had a, a carport, and that was the only thing that was paved, was underneath the carport. And, you know, anything else was, was not paved, you know. And some people had since maybe paved from the carport out to the street and closed the carport or did whatever. But I'm just thinking, passing an ordinance like this is just a serious, serious financial burden on, on people. And that's what frightens me about this ordinance right here. It sounds great, but, you know.
By smart policy, I, I understand what you're saying, but I actually drove through the city before I made my decision on this. And we are not seeing a lot of people doing it now. And I suggest that we do it and take care of it before it becomes an issue. It is not really a problem. I'm not seeing a lot of that happening here in our community. So I did drive through those areas that you're talking about.
And again, you know, I don't doubt you saw what you saw, you know. I just know my neighborhood, you know. I know around areas that people do have boats that are parked on the side of their house according to code right now, but it's not a paved spot. I do know that, you know, different times of day and different days of the week are different. You know, weekends are different than a workday. You know, workday, you drive around, people are at work. You come home in the evening, it's a lot more cars. I'm not saying you didn't drive around in the evening. I'm just saying that, you know, I, I still, I still feel that this, this has a potential of a heavy burden. So on that, I'm going to go out. We've got a couple of people signed up for a public on this, and then, of course, I'll bring it back up. So we'll have to public, I got Bob Breedlove first up.
Thank you. My name is Bob Breedlove, 5143 Limestone Drive. I got this off the city calendar and read it. And like Bill had said, my own particular feelings are, the elderly in these single-family homes, such as the one I live in, just can't afford to be paving a lot of roads, much less the driveways. I have a home that has a driveway that holds one car. I have a side yard that will not grow grass, has never had grass. We spoke to a young lady that grew up in the home over the weekend. She said, there's never been grass there. So we chose them to park there. So what constitutes pavement? Is it gravel? Is it turf block? Is it shell? Is it concrete or asphalt? Can it be one of the above? It can be a choice. Because when you're talking about pavement, I walked several neighborhoods this weekend. In my own, there are six homes with absolutely no driveway. There's one home that has a paved carport, no driveway. These are not fancy homes, big homes, rich people, just average Joe, like myself. I shared with you one meeting, when I moved here, I checked into the ordinances of Port Richie. One of the reasons I moved to Port Richie was for its relaxed atmosphere. Was for its relaxed ordinances. It wasn't as strict as some of the deed restriction we found in some of the other neighborhoods. So we chose Port Richie for the lifestyle we found and enjoyed here. So as you consider this, and it is a good ordinance to consider, please consider ramifications and the choices one might make when he wants to have a driveway. It's a very expensive home on our street, there's driveway is gravel. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ron Padova.
Ron Padova, 8002 Brighton Drive, Port Richie. I support some kind of parking ordinance that you're coming up with as far as at the homes. I agree with some of these people, some of the other ho, older homes don't have areas to park. But there's a lot of homes that when you go down Bay Boulevard, it's not the car parked next to the other one in the driveway. It's the car with the boat trailer strapped completely across the front of the yard. There's no reason for that. And that's a lot of the problems we have. You're talking about a car that might be parked on the side of another car versus one strapped across the front of the yard. If we allow this to continue, property values in the cities will go down. You're in a budget, you're discussing your budget now. And I don't want my taxes to get raised because property values are going down, so you have to raise the millage to make up for it. I would rather see the city and everybody's property values go up because people are improving their homes and the city overall appearance is looking better. So that's my worry. I think we need to do something about this and we need to crack down on code enforcement to protect everybody's values in their homes.
Thank you, sir. I'll bring it up to council, I mean. Please, Sandy. Yes.
Sanders Paul D. 8207 Old Post Road. Hello, we can't stop parking on Old Post Road with the businesses, right? Can't stop that. But yet again, we could take the residents and penalize them because they don't have a lot of money, they have a small house, they don't have enough parking. Again, we're not deed restricted. Deed restricted, every house conforms. The city was not built as deed restricted. It's a quaint little city. Very simple. All right, code enforcement can say, please don't park your car sideways. But you have to let people park their cars. If they have a driveway that holds one car and there's three cars in the family, what would you like them to do? They don't have this kind of money. You know, you people are up there, as I said before, trying to make this huge expensive city out of Port Richie. We're a little city on the river. You got it? We have boats, all right? The boats are supposed to be kept on the side, that ordinance was good. But don't tell people they have to pave to park. It's their property, not your property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul D. Is anybody else I skipped over, over here? I see a hand.
Sherri Ewald, code enforcement officer for the City of Port Richie.
Oh, you've been here in stealth.
Joe Gross, I worked with Joe for many, many years. Great boss. There are certain things that you can do. There's a lot of controversy about the additional paving, but there's also a big gap between the existing ordinances that there are for aesthetic purposes. Okay? One thing you could, Port Richie has a ton of rentals. A lot of absentee owners, okay? You can cite a tenant today and they're going to abandon their debris. You still have the debris, the tenant's gone, you have nobody to cite. You can't, there's a fine line between knocking on somebody's door and saying, hey, please don't park on the grass if you have no backbone for it. Okay? There are things you can do by making the landlords register. We've just put something in place where we're more current on the transfer of property ownership. City of Port Richie has a very diverse economical base. You've got million-dollar homes, you've got $25,000 homes, okay? You can't take that $25,000 home and make it a million-dollar home. It's not going to happen. The ordinances are not in place to make them do it at this point. I've done a lot of research within the last approximately two weeks on aesthetics, which I'll be presenting to Tom and see if he wants to move forward with them. A portion of it is painting, pressure washing, some type of parking. Pasco County did go to no parking on the sides of the homes. No boats, trailers, nothing. Unless you can meet your side setbacks. That's impossible, unless you have a corner lot. So those are just a couple of different things that can be looked at. Reference to the knock and talk, when I worked for Joe Gross, I actually found, I guess it was Friday, the happy stickers and the letters and all that stuff. And that's stuff that will go to finance to see if we can get it printed. You know, it's a form letter. And on it, you can get a little bit creative and say, hey, driveway needs to be, you know, cleaned and things like that. But there's still fine lines on what you can tell people to do and what you can say, hey, could you please take care of this? So I just, I want to make sure that we all know that. Nancy?
Did you have a question?
I do. When you're out talking to some of these homeowners in the City of Port Richie, do they ever mention to you that they don't have the funds or the, the, the financial ability to, to make renovations or clean up? Cleaning up is, is free. That's just labor, you know, get out, rake your yard, that kind of thing. But have, have they ever asked for assistance? Have they ever said, no, we don't have money?
No.
Okay. Have you ever, I, I think what, we need to do a different approach here. And, and if you'll work with me on it, we'll do this. Pastor Lord does, is always asking us, how can I help the City of Port Richie? They have all kinds of volunteers. We have the paint up, well, we did have the paint up fix up and whether or not we continue that or not. But, you know, this might be a way for us to help some of those lower income families make some repairs. Because if we can help buy paint, just, I mean, who wouldn't want their house painted? You know, really? Who really wouldn't want their house painted? So if we can have Pastor Lord work with you and, and whatnot, and we can maybe get some program like that going, so we can get some of these things done to some of these homes.
And that's fine to offer a volunteer if it's not an ordinance violation? Because I'm there because you're in violation.
Okay.
So if they don't comply, they will get a ticket.
Okay, so let's, let's say they don't have the means to comply and through the paint up fix up program, we can help them comply with volunteers?
I can refer them to somebody.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
But I can't be the facilitator.
Okay, okay.
Like if there's a sheet that I can hand them and say, well, hey, contact United Way or whoever.
Okay, okay. Then I'll chat with Pastor Lord and see if there's something that he could put together that they are willing to help the citizens of Port Richie with some chores in the yard and things like that.
And CARES does a lot of that. I have several older people that I deal with, with CARES. But that's an agency that.
That's a, that's more of a governmental agency.
Exactly.
Yeah, where, where he, he's the, the church and, and they have a huge network to help people, so.
And the Boy Scouts do it and things like that.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. There's all, there's always, but yeah, if we could hand them something. And I'll talk to Pastor Lord about that to see whether or not there's anything that he prefers to put out. If anything, he may choose not to, but just a thought. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Sherri, before you leave, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I wanted to ask you a question. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you.
That's okay.
Sitting, you know, in plain clothes, plain clothes. Sherri, what exactly do people do when they're in a small house with a, a single-car driveway? And there's three cars in the family? And maybe the, one of the kids has a, a boat? I mean, what are they expected to do? Where are they putting the cars and this boat? Where?
I don't have an answer for them. The boat, yes. But I can't direct them on where they can park their cars.
So unless we have an ordinance that says if you have, you know, more cars than you have the appropriate parking for, it's not enforceable if these people go and park sideways on the lawn. There's nothing to enforce that because we don't have anything.
And that's why the discussion is about this ordinance, so that we could possibly put something in place to give them direction.
Right. But I don't, I, I wanted to, to, something to be in place, there's no doubt we need it. But it's also taking into consideration what Sandy brought, brought up and what Bob Breedlove brought up.
There could be literature in the ordinance that states you must park adjacent to existing parking, existing driveway. So that if somebody doesn't have their driveway paved, maybe they've got pavers, maybe they've got just gravel strips, you know, then they would need to park adjacent to the established parking.
So I guess it's all in the language of the, the ordinance and how everything is written in order to make it enforceable.
And that would eliminate people parking across their, their front yards and so forth like that. But if the, if the language is in there that they must park adjacent to established parking, that might be something to look at.
But there again, we also don't want, we don't want nine people moving into a place that really should only have three, you know? And so in some ways, this parking ordinance can help that. But the other question I have is how is, how is the parking for residents different than parking for a, a restaurant? A restaurant can only have so much parking that they're, that they're, they have capacity for.
I can't answer that for you.
Yeah, yeah, well, it is essentially the same thing, you know, I mean. You know, any, any commercial establishment outside of the, the overlay district, which is slightly different, but, you know, needs to provide its own parking according to building code, I'm sure. Steve, you had something you want, sorry, he had his hand up there for a bit, so.
I'll be, I'll be quick, Terry. Well, you know, again, I hear all this discussion. And again, you know, we need some teeth. And in keeping it simple, you know, I think we all know when we drive around what we see and where these problems are. They've been described tonight already. And Nancy just described one here recently. And I'm sure there are a few of those. But in cleaning that up, obviously, this needs to be a works in progress. But, you know, again, I, I understand the smaller homes. I understand four people in the home, let's face it, kids are staying at home longer. It's expensive out there. And, you know, there may be a situation, as you said, one that you could not answer was, you know, what Phyllis had provided. And there, and there certainly may be some of those. But I think, again, we're getting away from what we're really looking at to try to keep it simple. You know, we know where these are and, you know, we need to do something. I, I don't think we're just, you know, talking about the business parking and the problem we've had there that's also been a works in progress and coming back to the residents to try to beat them while they're down. That's not our intention. But obviously, to clean it up. And anybody driving down, what I drive every day, can certainly see what we're talking about among other areas as well, so.
Terry?
I just wondered, can you give us any ideas to how many homes in the city create this problem?
That have this problem currently with vehicles parking on the grass and so forth? Now, I'm, I travel the city during working hours. So probably 80% of the people are at work. You know, I would say there's probably 100 homes.
Thank you, Sherri. Appreciate it. Thank you.
There's a bar for rent. There's a bar for rent.
So what's, what is council's pleasure at this point? I've, I've made myself pretty clear where I stand, so.
Well, I know Tom obviously might have a few words, especially with our sister city and what they're reviewing, where they started in January and where they're at now. You know, maybe there's a few words you want to say in regards.
What I could do, should you elect to continue to discuss this, I could get you some sample code language from other jurisdictions for you to decide what you like and what you don't like.
I think that'd be very helpful.
I also would like Ms. Ewald's opinion too, because we can sit up here all day long and say, well, this is what we think's going to work well. And then she's going to turn around and say, foo, it's not going to do anything for me. So, you know, once we, you know, let her look at some of them prior to bringing them to council and, and say, well, this one looks better than this one and, and, you know, because we could, we could be here all, you know what I'm saying?
We, we talk all the time.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Definitely.
And I.
Look, they're smiling right now.
There's a bar for rent.
Really? I, I think it's just important that we not single out certain areas.
Oh, absolutely.
I think it has to be, as Joe said today, it has to be a sweep. Because the, the minute that you go into selective enforcement, you know, you're scraping the bottom of the barrel and that's not where we want to go.
And just to follow up on that, that, that's what we try to do. We, we've never tried to be heavy-handed. We're just trying to keep things clean. And we, we go through an area and not singling anybody out.
And I think, Tom, with, working with, with Sherri, you know, in coordination with putting all this together, maybe we can come up with something that. maybe we can come up with something that might be enforceable. There's no sense writing something if it can't be enforced. What's the point of it all? You know, it's just all exercise in futility and a lot of wasted money.
Well, I mean, do we have a direction there? Tom, do you have a direction?
I think I have.
Yeah.
What your consensus is.
Moving on.
All right, moving on. To agenda item number three. Police impound vehicles to be declared as surplus. Mr. O'Neil.
Yes, we have a number of vehicles that did not sell during the recent GovDeals auction. What we are requesting, and these are all impounded vehicles, we're requesting that you authorize us to send them to the Tampa Machinery Auction for public sale. We've been successful with that in the past. Indeed, I've worked with Tampa Machinery Auction for decades and have nothing but positive things to say. So we're ready to do that if you authorize us to send these vehicles that were already surplus to the Tampa Machinery Auction.
We're cleaning up Port Ritchie, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second?
I do have a, I have a comment.
Yeah, open for discussion, we have motion and second. Go ahead, Phyllis.
I know, I was just going to ask Tom for the record, because I already asked the question and got the answer, but I wanted to ask Tom for the record to tell council how much money in the past we have received from the auction.
The latest vehicles that were sent to the Tampa Machinery Auction netted eight thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. It was for four pickup trucks that were in very poor condition and beyond their serviceable life. So we netted eight thousand eight hundred and ten dollars on that.
Gee, we could put that money toward our last police vehicle purchase.
And these are ones that have already gone through the website auction process.
Yes, they've been put on the GovDeals site.
GovDeals site.
But they didn't sell.
Didn't get any action off of there, so Tampa...
We sold a bunch of vehicles, but...
I'd like to see a report on how much we've got off of that, too.
Sure.
That'd be nice. But yeah, at this point, the next step is Tampa Machinery Auction, there's really no place else to go. And we don't need them back there cluttering up the impound lot and just getting older and rustier and more and more worthless, so. Okay, any comment for the public on that? Mr. Tom, Mr. Brown?
Handle that court. What's the expense of getting these vehicles from the impound lot to the auction? How do you do that? Tow them down, drive them down?
I'm not in a position to answer that question. We pay them a towing fee.
They come and get them?
Yes, they come and get them. Because some of them don't run. I'd say a majority of them probably don't run far enough to go to Tampa, but...
I just have a quick question. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Does the, do you think the place over here on Ridge Road would take a vehicle?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The place on Ridge Road that does the...
Recycling place?
Recycling?
Well, we're not scrapping the cars, you know, they're auctioning them off.
No, but now they're salvaging, aren't they?
The, what we're required to do is sell them at a public auction, a public sale.
Right.
And so they can go down if they're interested and bid at the Tampa Machinery Auction.
Okay, okay, all right, understood, all right.
Mr. Breedlove?
Bob Breedlove, five-one-four-three, Limestone. Tom, I went on the GovDeals site starting about two months ago trying to find these vehicles because I was curious. I couldn't find them. So you said they went through an auction and possibly you sold some, but using the numbers provided, the four-digit code from GovDeal, I couldn't locate any vehicles.
Are you referring to the GovDeals site, website?
Yes, I am.
I can get you that information, I don't have it right here with me.
I believe you have it in the minutes, the GovDeals site and you had a four-digit code. I searched it, been searching it for a couple of months.
Okay, we'll get it to you.
So I'm not sure if we're advertising correctly or if they're just not being found. Maybe I just can't find them.
I'll get you that information.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, back to council, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right. Last agenda item, appointment of MPO representative.
Yes, this is basically an item for council consideration, placed in front of you. You may wish to wait on this until a new mayor is seated. Typically, the mayor has fulfilled this position in the past, so it's strictly at your pleasure.
I would say wait because, you know, that's October. Previously, it obviously was Mayor Taylor, but previous to that, I know it was Rich Rover for years, so. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but...
No, I would, I would agree. You know, I think that's something to wait for the new incoming mayor.
So that'd be on probably the late October agenda?
Probably, you know, I mean, you know, you've got the election on the thirteenth, then we have to have a swearing-in ceremony, which is typically the following Monday, and then whatever regular meeting follows that, it should be on that.
Now, question was if, let's just say for instance, the mayor could not go to this meeting based on the time that they usually have this. I think it was said we could have a staff member be there. I don't know if that's ever been done in the past where they have actually served on that, I'm not sure.
Well, I've been on the MPO tax committee for years. If you desire for me to attend the MPO meeting itself, I certainly could do that. What I would say is a lot of times there's nothing on the agenda that's even locally oriented. And if it's something that pertains to I-75 or State Road 56, you know, it's probably a waste of my time on your behalf to go there. But if there's something on there that you want to have me present on, I'd be glad to do that.
Well, and also I think we all remember we had Jeff Starkey here and he encouraged that we're the only ones not there right now. So I think we told him at that point we would have somebody picked here shortly, so. Yeah, I don't know if we can update him at all or anything.
That's, that's all well and good, but you know, the problem is, is that, you know, we literally have to take a day off of work in order to go. And we, and I would not be willing to take a day off every month to go to an MPO meeting. That's just insanity. I, you know, I don't know what we're gonna do, whether or not we could do a rotation schedule? I mean, that might be something that we could do.
Well, the new mayor might take it.
When are, when are the meetings held usually?
Once a month and date city.
At, during the day?
Yes.
Well, wouldn't it make sense for the city manager?
The only thing is, is the member that attends votes and it's an elected official position.
And see, that's gonna be an issue too, because, because if we, if we do a rotation, then who would, who would, we'd have to make a voting member and if there was gonna be a vote, then they'd have to show up for that meeting, it'd get a little sticky. It's unfortunate that, you know, we have to work, unlike the county commissioners, you know, they, you know, they, they can get involved in all that kind of thing because that's their full-time job. Whereas here, as much as I love this little city, it doesn't pay my bills.
Well, isn't there, isn't there, hasn't there ever been a suggestion that the meetings be held at night after hours?
Well, I doubt that the county commissioners would want to do that, then they'd have to work overtime.
Well, isn't that terrible?
What I would suggest is that you authorize me to attend the meeting and give input on any matters that pertain to the city. I could do that until a new mayor is seated. I just can't vote.
That's a Band-Aid, Tom.
Yeah, I can't vote.
But we, we don't, we don't know if the new, new mayor, I say we just wait till the new mayor comes because we don't, we don't know that a new mayor could do it either because I'm sure they're full-time workers too, so.
Well, and whoever is the new mayor doesn't have the experience possibly or the knowledge. I don't know how tactfully to put it. But I say wait until after the election.
Well, how many meetings are mandatory to attend?
None of them are mandatory. There's one meeting a month.
Okay, well, let me just look at my schedule and see if I can squeeze another thing in.
He said there was a lot going on and it was very suggested that we, that we attend.
Well, so, so why don't you take the day off of work and I'll take a day off of work and call your boss, I'll call my boss.
That's great. Well, you know, again, whether or not it'd be a benefit at this point, as Tom indicated, that at least he have a presence because we're not looking until the end of October as possibly fulfilling this. And then we're depending on perhaps the mayor as being the person to do that, who traditionally for several years has been that person.
Well, that's only because Mayor Taylor was self-employed and then Mayor Rover worked for a very generous company that allowed him to do that. Not saying that our company's not generous.
Is there, Tom, is there a...
Anyone listening? No.
Is there a meeting upcoming then for September, this month, that...
Yeah, I'll have to confirm that, but I believe there is.
And I would just ask Bill, you know, at this point, if there's gonna be two meetings before we even get to the end of October, it might be wise that at least we have representation, not voting representation, but at least representation nonetheless until that October point. I mean, we're gonna have two more times that we miss.
But Mr. O'Neil said that oftentimes that he would be glad to go if it pertains to the city of Port Ritchie.
Yeah, and...
That he didn't want to waste our time nor the citizens' money to drive out there if it doesn't pertain to Port Ritchie.
And very frequently, it doesn't have to do with this side of the county. They do not spend a lot of time dealing with our side of the county. It's, 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 it's the eastern side, it's Tampa, it's, they're not talking about it.
Well, that may have been why Mr. Starkey had asked us to come because maybe he thought with more representation we could get, be heard a little bit more, but, you know. So we'll talk about it, we'll talk about it when, when the election is over and the mayor's in place.
Okay. Well, that being the last item on our agenda, as far as I could say, Phyllis, you had something you wanted to add?
Yes, I forgot at the beginning. I don't know who generated this, but this is probably, in all the years that I have been involved, this is probably the nicest piece of literature, the most professional and eye appealing. It was wonderful and I applaud the city manager and whoever worked on this. It was a very nice piece of literature.
Who did it? Hold up, hold up.
It was Jocelyn and I. But I'll pass along all the credit to Jocelyn.
Thank you. Like a true gentleman.
Wherever she is, wherever she is.
It was excellent, really is.
It was me bugging Tom to do it. No, I'd heard of people that, you know, had actually, still weren't even aware that Eloise had passed away. And, you know, to get that information out there to everybody, I thought was just really, really important to do. And that was very well done, so thank you, Jocelyn.
Very nice, very nicely done.
Guys did a good job.
One more thing before we close. We met with the Playport Ritchie group to, today. I wish more people would jump in and get involved. We put our statement, our mission statement together and we're going to be finalizing our contract with Investigation Station. And the next thing is to put a letter together that we can, or a postcard together that we can send out or hand out to possible donors. And last but not least, what's it called? Fund Me, GoFundMe will be our next project, Jocelyn. And I'm gonna take a day off of work and come sit with Jocelyn Martinez so that we can get the GoFundMe page going for the splash pad. Something Eloise Taylor said, let's get it moving.
Yep. And it's good to have you working on it. Work well done, thank you, Nancy. All right, there being no more items before us on today's agenda, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.